Welcome and let's call to order the City of Milton Virtual Common Council Meeting Wednesday, April 6, 2022 at 6:03, 2, 1. Somewhere around there.
I have two on mine.
All right, 6:02. And can we get confirmation of appropriate meeting notice?
Meeting notice was posted on Friday, April 1st at Hometown Ace Hardware in Milton, Piggly Wiggly and Milton City Hall.
Thank you. And item number two is approval of agenda. I was just gonna say that Devon has to make all the first motions and then we can fight over the second one. So Devon.
I'll move approval of the agenda.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. We have an agenda and then Devon will be leading us in the pledge of allegiance. And you can see the flag over Inga's shoulder. And for once, I don't have to leave. Thank you Devon in advance. You have to unmute yourself, of course.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Public comments regarding items which can be affected by council action. So Inga, I'll let you take this one.
Okay, well, there is no one in the waiting room. And if anyone wishes to speak during public comments, they can press unmute and speak now. I know there's a couple people that have agenda items listed on the agenda. So Anisa, the mayor, she usually lets people speak now or at the agenda item.
All right, I don't see anybody unmuting them. So we will go on to item number five, which is the meeting dedication. And Bill Wilson has so graciously accepted my invitation to do the meeting dedication. So Bill, thanks.
I'd like to dedicate this meeting to the memory of Reverend Desmond Tutu, Tutu, who died in December of 2021, was a South African Anglican bishop and theologian. He was a human rights advocate and a forceful anti-apartheid voice, who along with Nelson Mandela and others managed to bring down South Africa's system of racial segregation and white minority rule. Tutu approached his life's work with humor, with joy, offered many words of wisdom worthy of emulation. And here are just a couple of short quotes. First one is, if you are neutral in situations of injustice, you have chosen the side of the oppressor. The second one, I think, is a really great one for deliberative bodies like ours. It's, don't raise your voice, improve your argument. Good sense does not always lie with the loudest shouters, nor can we say that a large unruly crowd is always the best arbiter of what is right. And then the final one, I guess there's some question as to whether or not Tutu is the original source of it. But I like it so much that I thought I'd end with it. And it is, there comes a point when we need to stop just pulling people out of the river. We need to go upstream and find out why they're falling in.
Love that. I love the quotes and what an impactful life he led. And thank you for sharing that with all of us tonight. I'm not positive that everybody received my email this afternoon requesting further assistance in regards to mayoral proclamations. And that's okay if you didn't, because I did go ahead and assign some of you some proclamations to help me read them, because there are six. And I truly believe that I will not have a voice if I read six proclamations in a row. And for some of you, that might be a celebration, but it will be difficult for me to continue to share the meeting without my voice. So the first mayoral proclamation is declaring Arbor Day, April 30, 2022. And I have asked Devon to read this proclamation. And then my reading helpers only have to go as far as to where the words "now therefore I" Anisa Welch Mayor, I can read those last paragraphs. So you don't have to pretend that you're me. Okay. So our first, our first one will be the Arbor Day one that Devon will read. Then I will read the donate life one. And then Larry follows me. And then we'll just, we'll get through these. So Devon, you in advance. And it's all yours.
All right.
Do you want me to bring up the proclamation on the screen?
I have it on mine.
Okay. If anyone wants me to, just let me know.
Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wood and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal.
Now, therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April 30, 2022, as Arbor Day in the City of Milton. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And further, I urge all citizens to plant trees, to gladden the hearts, and promote the well-being of this and future generations. And I will sign this, April 6, 2022. All right. Donate Life Month, April 2022. Whereas today, more than 100,000 men, women, and children in the United States need a life-saving organ transplant. In many cases, an organ donation provides another chance to live a full life. For those waiting for that gift of life, the uncertainty can be excruciating, exacting a physical and emotional toll on the potential recipient and their loved ones. During National Donate Life Month, we give thanks to the families and friends of donors who have supported their loved ones' decision to save lives by donating. We show our appreciation for the professionals who serve the transplantation community. And we encourage Americans who can to become organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donors. In so doing, we honor those who have given the most extraordinary of gifts. And whereas last year, because of the charity and generosity of the American people, our nation's transplant experts performed more than 41,000 organ transplants, a record number. We saw organ donations from deceased donors set an annual record for the 11th consecutive year. Living donor transplants, which decreased significantly in 2020 due to the COVID-19 pandemic, increased with over 6,500 living donor transplants performed. And whereas every year, nearly 18,000 people in America are diagnosed with life-threatening blood cancers or other diseases for which a blood stem cell transplant may be their best or only hope for a cure, approximately 70% of these individuals need donors from outside of their families. Although nearly 23 million adults in the United States are currently registered as blood stem cell donors, we need more registrants to help the many individuals who still have difficulty finding a suitably matched donor. And whereas, while transplantation continues to increase substantially and meet the needs of many people with organ failure, we must continue our efforts to shorten the waiting list and encourage organ donation. If you have not signed up as an organ donor, we can use your help. I encourage every American to help people in need by visiting organdoner.gov for organ, eye, and tissue donation, and bloodstemcell.hrsa.gov for marrow and blood donation. And whereas during Donate Life Month, we thank the millions of individuals across America who are living or registered organ donors, we recognize and commend the researchers, advocates, volunteers, and medical professionals working to reduce the number of people awaiting vital organ transplants. The City of Milton applauds the therapeutic innovations that have decreased rates of organ rejection and have extended the lifespan of transplanted organs. Now, therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as National Donate Life Month in the City of Milton. Further, I call upon every person who can to share the gift of life and hope by becoming organ, eye, tissue, marrow, and blood donors. And I will sign this, the 6th day of April, 2022. And I also will submit a copy of this proclamation to UW Organ Donation. Earth Day, Larry. Donate yourself. We go.
Thank you. I already started, but I'll back up. Thank you. Sorry. Whereas Earth Day was first celebrated on April 22, 1970, to inspire an appreciation of the natural world through conservation and protection. And whereas the annual recognition of this day is an opportunity to demonstrate our commitment to the principles of that first Earth Day. And whereas global challenges continue to grow, such as environmental degradation, climate change, food and water shortages. And whereas the residents of the city of Milton are encouraged to implement practices designed to preserve and to protect our environment and shape the future of our environmental security. And whereas it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success. And whereas this year marks the 52nd anniversary of Earth Day movement, let it be known that the City of Milton encourages all businesses, institutions, and individuals to celebrate the earth and commit to caring for the planet and its resources.
Now, therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April 22, 2022, as Earth Day in the City of Milton. Further, I encourage people in Milton to combat climate change and environmental degradation, support green economy initiatives, and to encourage others to undertake similar actions. And I will sign this, the 6th day of April in 2022. Thank you. Our next proclamation is Sexual Assault Awareness Month. And Chief Barcourt will read this one. Thanks.
Whereas, whether it is in the workplace, in our schools, within our social circles, or in the home, sexual violence is pervasive in our state and our country, harming people and communities across Wisconsin. And whereas, according to the Wisconsin Coalition Against Sexual Assault, one in three women, one in six men, and nearly half of transgender adults in our state will experience sexual violence at some point in their lives. And whereas, approximately one in 10 children in the United States will be sexually abused before the age of 18. And sexual harassment and assault remain pervasive issues on college campuses nationwide, with one in five women and one in 16 men experiencing sexual assault during their time in college. And whereas, we recognize that members of the LGBTQ community experience higher rates of sexual violence than their heterosexual peers. And whereas, we also recognize that Black, Indigenous, and people of color are disproportionately impacted by sexual violence and have long experienced harm by systemic responses that are rooted in racism. And whereas, it is clear that we cannot end sexual violence without ending racism, misogyny, homophobia, transphobia, and all forms of interpersonal and institutional oppression. And our state commends the BIPOC-led organizations in particular that have been at the forefront of the anti-sexual violence movement for decades. And whereas, as technology has evolved to become a major part of our everyday lives, we are reminded that sexual violence can happen anywhere, including in online spaces, and that for too long, harassment, bullying, and other forms of sexual violence have come to be expected as typical and unavoidable behaviors online. And whereas, the theme of this year's Sexual Assault Awareness Month, Building Safe Online Spaces Together, encourages folks to create online communities centered around respect, inclusion, and safety, where sexual violence is taken seriously. Whereas, and whereas this month, the City of Milton honors and joins all victims and survivors of sexual violence, advocates, and dedicated organizations across our state in raising awareness of the prevalence of sexual violence, educating communities on how to prevent it, and calling on corporate leaders and policymakers to implement and enforce systems and laws that ensure justice and accountability.
Now, therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Sexual Assault Awareness Month in the City of Milton. And I will sign this, the 6th day of April, 2022. And thank you. And our next one is the Mayoral Proclamation for Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week, which I was going to make Kelsey say all these nice things about herself. But she's a homo person. And so we're going to have Jenny say it about her. And we appreciate that Jenny is going to do the treasurer's appreciation proclamation. And then Kelsey will honor her when it's Clerk's Month. So thank you, Jenny.
Municipal Treasurers Appreciation, week of April 17 through the 23 of 2022. Whereas, the Office of the Municipal Treasurer is a time-honored and vital part of local government that impacts the day-to-day life of citizens throughout the state. And whereas, the municipal treasurers provide the necessary financial information to governing bodies and agencies at the local county and state levels. And whereas, the municipal treasurers administer the procedures and keep the financial records that allow governing bodies to carry out its public function efficiently and confidently. And whereas, all municipal treasures are the official custodians responsible for proper management and investment of public funds. And whereas, municipal treasurers continually strive to improve the administration of the responsibilities of the Office of the Municipal Treasurer through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and conferences across Wisconsin. And whereas Governor Tony Evers signed a proclamation on March 4, 2022, declaring April 17 through 23, 2022, as Municipal Treasurers Appreciation Week in Wisconsin.
Therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim the week of April 17 through April 23, 2022, as Municipal Treasurers Week in the City of Milton, and further extend appreciation to our municipal treasurer, Kelsey. Spanish? Did I say it correctly?
Bannock.
Bannock, Bannock, Bannock. And to all municipal treasures for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. And I will sign this, the 6th day of April, 2022. Thank you, Jenny. And now, moving on to the Mayoral Proclamation for National Library Week. And thank you, Ashley, for reading this for us.
Of course. Whereas libraries are accessible and inclusive places that foster a sense of connection and build community. Whereas libraries connect people to technology, providing access to broadband internet, computers, and training that are critical for accessing education and employment opportunities. Whereas libraries offer opportunities for everyone to connect with new ideas, become their best selves through access to multimedia content, programs, and classes, in addition to books. Whereas today's libraries and their services extend far beyond the four walls of a building, and everyone is welcome to use their resources. Whereas, in times of crisis, libraries and library professionals play an invaluable role in supporting their communities, both in person and virtually. Whereas libraries strive to develop and maintain programs and collections that are as diverse as the populations they serve, ensure equity of access for all. Whereas, to adapt to our changing world, libraries are expanding their resources and continuing to meet the needs of their patrons. Whereas libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions for all members of their community, regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. Whereas libraries are cornerstones of democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. Whereas libraries, librarians, and library workers are joining library supporters and advocates across the nation to celebrate National Library Week.
Therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, proclaim National Library Week, April 3 through the 9, 2022, in the City of Milton. During this week, I encourage all residents to connect with the Milton Public Library by visiting in person or online to access all their free resources and services. And I will sign this, the 6th day of April, 2022. We're getting there, everybody. We have one more proclamation. Linda Clark, are you ready to read this?
Yes, I am.
All right.
Whereas excessive alcohol consumption is a serious public health and safety concern in Wisconsin. And whereas, a higher percentage of adults in Wisconsin regularly consume alcohol than most other states, and a higher rate of these regular drinkers consume alcohol excessively, also known as binge drinking, at least once per month, when compared to other states. And whereas, consuming alcohol and binge drinking in particular can have a negative impact on an individual's personal life, professional life, and mental and physical health, and can even increase the risk of developing some cancers. And whereas, the estimated annual cost of binge drinking to the Wisconsin economy is $3.9 billion, which includes costs related to lost productivity, healthcare, and criminal justice. And whereas, this occasion presents all Wisconsinites with the opportunity to examine their drinking habits and assess the effects on their overall health and well-being, and to utilize the resources available on the Wisconsin Department of Health and Human Services website to learn more. Whereas this month, the State of Wisconsin joins the Wisconsin Department of Health Services in supporting the law enforcement of minimal legal drinking age laws, highlighting the resources and the supports available for folks who need professional help to avoid unhealthy alcohol use, and supporting our friends and family members and neighbors in their recovery.
And did you read the paragraph about the Milton Youth Coalition?
I think I missed it. I'm sorry. Whereas, the Milton Youth Coalition is working together to make a positive difference in the lives of Milton's youth by increasing the number of Milton youth who avoid consuming alcohol before the age of 21.
Now, therefore, I, Anisa Welch, Mayor of the City of Milton, do hereby proclaim April 2022 as Alcohol Awareness Month throughout the City of Milton. And I commend this observance to all our state's residents and Milton's community. And I will sign this, the 6th day of April, 2022. And thank you, Linda, for reading our last proclamation. And thank you, everyone, for your collaborative group efforts in going through our proclamations this evening. Item number 13, approval of minutes from March 15.
I'll move.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding Eagle Scout project to construct and place bat houses on City of Milton property. Is there anybody from the Eagle Scouts that wants to speak about this? I know all of you have the memo, and it excites me personally. But does anybody want to speak on this from the Scouts?
So Aurora is here. She came to Parks and Recreation and talked to us a little bit about her project, but I'll let her explain it to everyone here.
I wanted to put bat houses out on the snowmobile trail behind the fire station in Milton, and then possibly one in the dog park, too, to help with the bats in Milton.
Thank you very much. Is there, does anybody on the council have any questions or comments for Aurora?
I do.
Yes, Teresa.
Yes, Aurora. I live just beyond where you're talking about placing them. And I would, I was very excited to read about it. I have friends that also have bat houses in their yards, and they have found them very appreciative to have those there and that they are wonderful for the environment. So thank you. Looks like a terrific project.
Is there anyone else from the council that would like, Larry?
I really appreciate your efforts, too. I'm a lifelong conservationist. And there is truly a need for housing for bats, as they're really struggling, as you well know yourself. And so it's also a wonderful asset to the community in terms of insect control and things like that, too. So thank you.
Anybody?
I would just like to say I am very excited about this Aurora. We, I also have neighbors that have had bat houses. And I just think that this is just nature's way. And thank you for doing this, particularly in that area.
Any other comments or questions? Okay, Devon.
I move to accept the donation of the bat houses.
I'll second that.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Double aye.
Is there anyone opposed? It is passed unanimously. Congratulations. Best of luck on your project. And thank you for coming tonight. And thank you for speaking to us on that. Is this your first council meeting?
A second. I came earlier to one for, to talk about bat houses.
Okay, okay. Very nice. Thank you very much. And you are welcome, of course, to stay for the whole meeting. And if you choose, you can also leave. And we're fine with that, too, because you did listen to a lot of proclamations. And I feel like you did get some education tonight, too. So. And we're fine with that too, because you did listen to a lot of proclamations and I feel like you did get some education tonight too, so. Thank you. You are very welcome. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding the memorandum of understanding petition for membership for the Edgerton Fire Protection District.
Do you want me to take this one or? Oh, I lost you.
If you could, us take it. There's, I do have a comment to make, but I have to get it out of my, my pack.
Okay. So on March twenty-eighth, I believe Thursday, March twenty-eighth, the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board approved the memorandum of understanding that is included in your packet this evening. The next steps in the process is kind of directed by the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board would be to have all five petitioning municipalities pass this same MOU at their respective board meetings. We're first up, I think. I don't know if any of the other municipalities have passed it yet. Ultimately, this MOU kind of outlines the rules of engagement that will, we will follow both us as the petitioning entities and the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board. The rules of engagement that we will follow as we move through the membership process. By passing this MOU, it does not mean that we are admitted into the Fire Protection District Board. It merely just outlines kind of what the expectations are of both entities. It's very, very similar to the petition that was submitted back to the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board back in January. But this MOU really kind of codifies not only what the petitioning municipalities will do or agree to do, but also how the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board will, will work through the process with us. So I think, you know, the two important pieces are this doesn't guarantee our membership, nor does it, you know, make our membership a guarantee. And the other piece is, is that this is still very much a work in progress. And this is a good, this is a very exciting and very historic next step as pretty much every step along the process that we take in the next six months will be. So we'll probably say that quite a bit as the year goes on, but this is an exciting and historic moment in which we, the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board has basically said, hey, yeah, we, we, we want to talk. And, and this MOU will govern how that, how those discussions move forward.
Thanks. And I did speak with the other chairs of the municipalities or with most of them after this meeting. And they will schedule their votes as their meetings come up the following, the following weeks after our meeting. So this is an MOU that's going to be voted on by us and then our municipalities that are covered under it. It is, it doesn't have to get voted on by the city of Edgerton or the, the, the other municipalities that are governed by the Edgerton Fire Protection District Board, because the, the board has already voted on that. So it's, it's our side voting on this. One of the things that I did want to share with you is sort of an update on what is happening with fire and EMS in the municipalities in our area and surrounding areas, and it'll be very quick. Beloit is looking to hire six full-time staff. Broadhead is having difficulty sustaining their operations and has been relying a lot on mutual aid. Fort Atkinson passed a referendum last night looking to hire six firefighter paramedics and six firefighter EMTs. The city of Janesville is opening up new hiring for firefighters and paramedics later in the month and they're looking to hire ten. The city of Jefferson is looking at a possible referendum to hire nine to twelve firefighter, paramedics and EMTs. So a fall referendum. Johnson Creek is struggling to staff their ambulance twenty-four seven and has been relying upon mutual aid to provide initial EMS response on a regular basis. Lake Mills has notified their municipalities that they will cease operations December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two. And each of the municipalities are looking for alternatives individually. Marshall, the city of Marshall, Marshall EMS ceased operation in March due to staffing issues and is contracted with the city of Sun Prairie for EMS services. Orfordville is looking to hire Western Lakes. The Economic Lock Region is telling their municipalities they'll need six million per year an increase to sustain their operations. And Whitewater is currently undergoing a reorganization. That is really just a very small sampling of primarily southern Wisconsin municipalities. Just to give you an idea of how widespread this challenge is, that we are not alone. And you know, we are working very diligently. So we are not in a situation where all of a sudden we have no service, right? So I, I hope you appreciate the work that has been done so far. I know that you have. But I wanted to give you just a little bit of a broader context of what the overall situation is with our neighbors right now. So having said that, are there any questions or comments, Teresa?
No, no question.
Thanks. Bill?
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions. I just would like to comment that I think it, having read over it several times again, I think it reflects well in terms of what we're seeking as a community in terms of serving fire and EMS. So other than that, I have no comments.
Thanks Devon.
No comments.
Linda?
I just have a question. The other municipalities that are looking at this are, is there a timeline that we have to have? Everybody has to have this information back to Edgerton.
There wasn't like a specific timeline, but all of the municipalities anticipate having it on their agenda at the next available meeting that they have. Our, our meeting just happened to come first and there's others, you know, in the, the month of April. So I would anticipate by the end of April, the very latest, the first part of May, that everybody would have passed, would have likely passed this. I can't. I'm not assuming anything, but they will at least have voted on it.
Okay. And then my next question is, has, have you been able to go over this information with our chief, fire chief or anybody in the fire station at all?
Jeremy, I did send Jeremy Parker a copy of this and a copy of the press release. And I haven't had any feedback from him.
Okay. Thank you. I think that I, I agree with what Larry said. I think that this is, has everything that we've been looking at and working towards. And thank you.
And just for clarification, it is a vote on a memorandum of understanding on how to further proceed with discussions.
Yeah.
It is not voting on joining the Edgerton Fire Protection District or creating a new district, right? It's just an MOU of how discussions are going to proceed. Is everybody clear on that? Okay. So what it does do is, you know, it obligates us to have discussions. And, and there's a couple of items that we have already discussed that we, we would be working on. So Devon?
I move approval of the memorandum of understanding for, for their talks to join the Edgerton Fire Protection District.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right. That motion unanimously carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a commercial facade grant application for Stockman Property Development LLC at six forty-nine College Street.
So Mr. Eric Stockman of Stockman Property Development LLC has submitted a commercial facade grant application for the building that he reached, recently purchased at six forty-nine College Street. For those folks who are familiar kind of with the Milton landscape, that is the former Soccora Dental Office right there on College Street, the brick building that is currently painted yellow. Mr. Stockman intends to renovate the exterior of the building in a similar fashion to what he's already done for those buildings across the street at six forty-four, six forty-eight and six fifty. And paint the building a loyal blue, I believe was the color that was in there. And that's included in the packet as to what color it would be. This proposal also went before the plan commission earlier this evening as the property is located within the B-three zone district. So any exchanges to, or any changes to the exterior facade requires a site plan review. And the plan commission unanimously approved that site plan. And now the council's role in this process would be to review the commercial facade grant application. And the city administration supports this commercial facade grant application as it is really exactly what it's intended for, to continue to upkeep and upgrade the aesthetic appeal of our downtowns.
All right. Thank you. Larry, any questions or comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Ryan?
No questions or comments.
Devon?
No questions or comments.
Linda?
Looks great. No questions.
Teresa?
No questions, comments.
Bill?
Just that I'm delighted to see this one get decent treatment.
All right. We're waiting on you Devon.
I move to approve the commercial facade grant to Stockman Property Development LLC.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right. That's approved. Discussion and possible action regarding ordinance four ninety-three, amending article thirteen of chapter fourteen, regulating mobile businesses.
At the last council meeting, council reviewed the existing mobile business ordinance and directed staff to review other ordinances from different municipalities and present a possible changes. So city staff to go through what our current ordinance is, and we'll just go through that quickly, is that the mobile business application requires a submitted of a site plan references, inspection report and commercial liability insurance. The cost for the mobile business license is either a fee of three hundred dollars for six months or five hundred for twelve months. And with this site plan, it can be approved in public parking lots, private property, excuse me, private property or school property. But that site plan is only good for that location. So after review, the city decided, or the city staff thought that a good option may be to, for private property, the mobile business license would not apply for private properties. That would include school property. And then we were trying to figure out a, a good way to decide what public property would be considered acceptable. And we couldn't really come up with a great answer. So what we put in there was mobile businesses are not allowed on public property. However, as an exemption, if they're set up for events, then a special event permit application would be submitted. And that is a turnaround time of only a couple of days unless there are questions. It is approved, would be approved by the police chief, the public works director, and then myself, the clerk, as the clerk. And then that allows us to regulate if there was any issues that we saw on public property. So if there was any, if it was in parking, we would be able to say, maybe this isn't the best option, but you could be here if there was, is things like safety issues. Even though the mobile business license would be no longer, there would be no fee for that. These would still need to, even on private property, follow regulations, including no sales of alcoholic beverages, limiting the hours to between seven AM to ten PM. And then also following the loud and unnecessary noise ordinances. This proposed ordinance would not fall under for seasonal sales of fresh produce or direct sellers. So one of the portions that council discussed last time was again regulating that if there was an issue, how we would handle that. So we still have our current ordinances that in other sections, if there was an issue on private property, that they need to follow those regulations. But if it's on public property and we had a specific food truck that was an issue for the special event permit application, we could deny it in the future if that happened.
Okay. Um, is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this?
This is Sharla Walker.
And would you like to speak Sharla?
Of course I would, especially about the topic. Everybody knows we have a food trailer. I love the changes. I was discussing them earlier with Jenny. And the only question I think I might, I have is, which seems really minute, but that seven AM to ten PM, I get the regulations. What if we're, what if there is an event that goes beyond ten? Is that something that could be addressed or changed at all? Is there any flexibility with that?
What would happen and, correct me if I'm wrong, because that's what is in the ordinance, then it would go to council for approval as far as variance to the, to the ordinance. So Sharla, I think it would be similar to, for example, the Milton Farmers Market where the, we did not allow alcohol in, in Goodrich Park, North Goodrich Park. But because they had requested it, it would, and council approved it, then they're able to do that. So if you had a special event where you needed to be earlier, it would come to council. So that, so then it would essentially add a little bit of time. We'd have to do a little scheduling to get it to council.
Perfect. Okay. So be aware of that. And then I guess the only other asterisk I would have is just usually those events are more in the summer, which I know is usually more vacation time. So depending, I would be curious on the number of people or how many, what that process would look like for the signatures for the, any event plan that was submitted.
So with that permit application, it would be availability. And I would say it would be less than a week as long as we receive all of the information. And Scott and Mark, who would be the other two on the signatures, unless they have, you know, thoughts too. If there's any areas maybe that we would, we would have concerns that may take longer for approval.
Okay. My only thoughts or questions. Thank you.
Anybody else, staff or have any questions or comments? Teresa?
No comments or questions. Looks good.
No. Okay. Thanks.
My only question was the same thing about the three signatures and so on in terms of either vacation schedules or, or that kind of thing. Don't know whether an, an alternate can be named or, you know, something to make sure that there's not a delay because the police chief and city clerk are on vacation for two weeks.
Then can we do electronic signatures?
Our special event permit applications, we are able to do electronic signatures. We've been slowly converting to that for all of the special event permit applications. So yes, that, that is an option.
Something I do here whenever I'm gone is I do designate an acting chief of police while I'm gone. So, or you know, some language that talks about or designate me would certainly cover our part of it here.
And for this, this would not affect the ordinance that is on today. It would actually affect the special event permit application ordinance. So we would just need to change that portion of it. So for example, right now in, in my section, if I wasn't here, Inga is the deputy clerk. So she would be the acting person. And that, Mark can answer this question, is that if I'm not available for elections, for example, Inga is able to fulfill my duties. So I'm not sure if that would also go into effect for other items in the ordinances.
Yes, it would.
Okay, perfect. So yeah, I'm covered.
Sounds like it's covered. I have no other questions.
Larry?
The only thing I, I'll say, just jump in. The only time that this would ever come up, two, two important variables would need to be met. One, they would need to be requesting to be on public space. And two, there would have to be a situation in which somebody's on vacation for greater than a week. You know, so the, the likelihood of this scenario coming to fruition is, is really, really, really sparse. If Sharla wakes up on Tuesday morning and says, I want to go take my truck over to
truck over to the Piggly Wiggly parking lot, as long as she's got permission from Jason Cowley, she doesn't need any signatures from us. So we're really talking about a pretty minute confluence of variables that this could delay anything.
Because Jason Colley is a public or a private?
Correct.
Yeah. And the majority of the food trucks, at least within the past year, have been people that are on private property, not requesting to be in public property. The only time that I've seen it is when it is a business that is having some kind of event and they just don't have the, they have the zero line, they're, they don't have a place or a parking lot.
And, and I don't know if this was said yet, I can't remember, but just to clarify too, like the school district parking lots. I know Charlotte, you've been at some school events before. We consider those private parking lots too, because they're not city owned. So as long as you have permission from the school, then there wouldn't be anything that the city would need to do for those as well.
Oh, oh, that makes, I didn't know that either. Thank you.
And right now, our ordinance says that school property is an option, but it requires a site plan even for private property or school.
I love it.
Is there anyone else in the, for public comments that wants to say anything before I go to Larry? Okay, Larry?
Well, the only comment I have, I like that it allows on private property and, and so a a food truck could be located at a, at a residential place as well, right? If they wanted to do that. So. They're not, I think it's fine.
Are you inviting us over, Larry? Is that what you're saying?
I'm, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, give that opportunity. So, yeah.
Ryan?
I don't really have any comment. Looks like Charlotte, you might have a lot more opportunities in the future.
Right. Oh, it's another invite, right?
Yeah, I have private property, I suppose.
Linda?
No comments.
Devon?
No comments.
Okay, are you Devon?
What are we looking for verbiage wise?
Um. Do we, uh, you know, I can't remember the verbiage, Mark.
The motion, I assume if you're in favor of this and you don't require a further reading, it would be motion to approve the first reading, waiving the second, third reading and adopting.
Right, I will motion to approve the amendment to ordinance four ninety-three regulating mobile businesses, waive the is it the first and the second?
Second and third.
Second and third and adopt.
Second.
All right, Mark's not muting himself, so we appear to be good. Nice work Devon. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone to post? All right, that motion carries. Discussion and possible action regarding a TIF development agreement with Signature Warehousing LLC.
So these item number eighteen and item number nineteen are somewhat intrinsically connected. Signature Warehousing or SNS Transport, as they are also known, has entered or has negotiated a TIF development agreement with the city of Milton. As you may recall, Signature Warehousing has been in negotiations with the city of Milton to purchase property out in our Crossroads Industrial Park. Item number nineteen addresses the purchase of property and, and how they have refined their site. But item number eighteen is the overarching TIF development agreement that would outline the roles and responsibilities both of Signature Warehousing and of the city of Milton as they develop their project. In short, Signature Warehousing is looking to purchase twenty-nine or twenty-five point nine one acres of land just south of Putman Parkway and construct in their first phase, a hundred and nine thousand square foot warehousing logistics and distribution facility. They will be, or it's their intention to take advantage of the new rail spur that will begin construction here very recently or very soon out there by Clausen Quality Chocolates. And they have plans for additional build outs, but this first phase of development as addressed in this TIF development agreement would be for the, their initial land acquisition and for the hundred and nine thousand square foot facility to be constructed. So I see Joel Dilly is from Signature Warehousing is on the line as well as attorney Michael Davis. But if anybody has any questions for me, I certainly can answer those. This is a pretty straightforward traditional TIF development agreement with a pay-go mechanism from the city of Milton, so long as minimum property tax value guarantees are made.
Public comments? Okay. Questions or comments? Teresa?
No question or comments, thank you.
Bill?
No.
Ryan?
Questions or comments?
Linda?
No questions or comment.
Larry?
Uh, thank you for choosing Milton, for locating your business here. We appreciate it and no, no other comments. Thank you.
Okay Devon.
I will motion to approve the TIF development agreement with Signature Warehousing LLC.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? That motion carries, congratulations. Discussion and possible action regarding a TIFT development agreement with
We need to do number nineteen, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, it's at the bottom, it's at the bottom, okay. Discussion and possible action regarding an amended offer to purchase thirty-one point two-two-nine acres of land along Putman Parkway.
So this item is somewhat perfunctory, but still necessary in terms of the kind of the legislative process. What was just approved is a TIF development agreement that outlines that the city of Milton is willing to sell twenty, twenty-five point nine one acres to Signature Warehousing. As you may recall, a meeting or two ago, Signature Warehousing came forward with an offer to purchase thirty-one point two-two-nine acres. So this is an amendment to that offer to reduce the amount of land to be purchased as referenced in the TIF development agreement from thirty-one point two-two-nine to twenty-five point nine one. And the reason for this is they have reduced the size of stormwater that they will need as they may be able to take advantage, one, of our facilities and two, they, they don't know their future build out plans. We have talked with them about a potential option for, for future purchases, but at this time it's, it's unnecessary. So this is again in direct conjunction with the TIF development agreement. But because the council previously approved a purchase of thirty-one point two-two-nine acres and they're, they're changing their request to twenty-five point nine one acres, this, that's why this item appears on the agenda. So in a, in a way, we kind of already approved it with item number eighteen, but since it was already previously approved, we should really take a more formal recognition of that change, of that amended offer to purchase. I can provide flashcards if necessary.
No. Teresa, any questions or comments? Bill?
No questions.
Ryan?
No, no questions.
Larry?
No questions.
No questions.
Devon?
No questions and I will make a motion to approve the amended offer to purchase.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That motion carries and I just feel like we are in a rhythm with Devon here, so let's keep going.
Been doing this for the last two years, this is wonderful.
Already pretty done, pretty much done if I knew he was gonna do all of them.
Thank you Joel and thank you Michael. And Michael, say thank you to your son who just wandered into the screen.
Thank you.
Yep, it's a pleasure working with you. Look forward to everything going on in Milton. Thanks guys.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion and possible action regarding a TIF development agreement with Putman Parkway is that one LI?
Yeah, one, yeah.
One corp?
Yep. So this is a TIF development agreement for the expansion of an existing facility located at seventeen fifty Putman Parkway. This was the, this building was constructed in twenty eighteen and housed SSI Technologies. SSI Technologies moved out in August of last year and now Merck Furs occupies that space on a, on a, on a lease. The owners of the properties, Badger Properties, have incorporated Putman Parkway One Corp and are looking to put a fifty thousand square foot addition on that facility. They don't have a tenant at this time lined up for that, but it, the way the real estate market is, likely will have one before they even start to move dirt out there. So this is an expansion of an existing facility. They have, for most part, satisfied with their first TIF development agreement for the construction of their initial facility. So this would be really a second TIF development agreement for the expansion of their, of their facility. Because there is no land involved in this, they don't need to acquire additional land. They're building the, the facility right on the existing site. This is even a more straightforward TIF development agreement with, again, a pay-go incentive that is based on the amount of property taxes generated on an annual basis for ten years.
Ryan?
No questions or comments?
Linda?
If they're doing a building addition, do we look at our landscaping again?
Well, they'll go through a site plan. They'll go through a site plan review at the plan commission level. They have a, they have a, a site plan in terms of an architectural drawing, but they haven't submitted their full site plan submitted to the plan commission yet. So that will happen.
Thank you.
Larry?
Uh, the pay go is based on the addition, correct?
It's correct.
Thank you.
Yep, yep, it's, it's almost irrespective of the existing facility. We kind of draw a line in the sand based on the current value and you can see that in the TIF development agreement that, that addresses this, it says the current taxes are this.
Yeah.
And what you need to do is increase your taxes to, right, to this in order to receive the full incentive. So there's a, a new, new baseline for all intents and purposes created.
Thank you.
Bill?
Questions?
Teresa?
No questions.
Devon?
I will motion to approve the TIF development agreement with Putnam Parkway One Corp.
A second?
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? I know that a lot of you have been waiting for number twenty-one.
It, it's no sewer televising, but it's pretty darn cool.
It is so close, so. Discussion, a lot of discussion. Impossible action regarding replacement of the bio solids thickening, building, makeup, air equipment, and I'm gonna need some definitions here. Mark?
Mark, I think they're asking you for something. Bio solids is one of the last steps in the treatment process. This process in the thickening building, it basically takes us, you know, liquids that have the solids and reduces the liquid content to make less solids volume. The building where the work is done has a makeup air unit so that there's constantly fresh air installed or brought into the building during the process. So that's safe to work in. The unit that's there now was installed in the, as part of the last treatment plant improvements back in two thousand and one. It's just had several issues over the last several years and has come to a point where the improvements needed are fairly costly and regular. So we looked into just replacing it with a, a new unit. We received four quotes that range from twenty-four thousand, four hundred and forty dollars up to twenty-eight thousand nine hundred and fifty-four. So that was a pretty good, or consistent range at least. Otherwise, if there's other questions, I'll answer those. If not, just looking for approval to make the purchase subject to publication of a class one notice that's required because it's over the five thousand dollar statutory limit.
How long will the transition time be where there's not gonna be any thickening going on?
It'll be down a couple of days, is what we've been told. So that, that building runs like three days, about three days a week right now.
Okay. Depending on the fiber intake or something?
Yes, definitely.
All right. Brian, any questions or comments?
Nope.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Bill?
I'll pass.
Larry?
No questions after that wonderful explanation. It was helpful, thank you.
I appreciate it too, like my brain is exploding. Devon?
I'll make a motion to approve the replacement of the bio solid thickening building makeup air equipment.
Is that a second?
Second, yes.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? All right, we're going, going forward. All right, discussion and possible action regarding engineering services for Northeast Lift Station, not exactly as exciting as number twenty-one, but Mark Langer is again going to be talking and explaining this one.
So this is a list station that would be constructed to provide service to an undeveloped area on Milton's northeast side. The service area and concept plan was developed back in October of two thousand and twenty-one. This would be for design of the station. Construction would take place after bidding. The work could be assessed to the property owner or the properties that are served by the station. Is there other questions? The total for the work order is thirty-seven thousand five hundred.
And this is just the engineering services?
Just the engineering design, yes.
Yep. Teresa, any questions or comments?
No, no.
Ryan?
Nope.
Bill?
No.
Larry?
No.
Linda?
No.
Devon?
What are you looking for as far as a motion goes?
Approve the work order for engineering services in the amount of thirty-seven thousand five hundred dollars for the Northeast Lift Station design.
I will make that motion.
I'll second it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? When Mr. Stockman gets sworn in next week, he will be the new Devon and he will be doing all of our motions for his first meeting.
Get ready.
We, we'll get to our Roberts Rules of Order book.
Anybody that did, yeah, that did not read a proclamation tonight should be doing a lot of talking next time.
I would buy one of those books.
I can order one of those books and they have two extras here, so.
And I have two at home and I carry around a couple of copies of the Constitution if anybody needs one.
And I'll get off topic.
Discussion and possible action regarding property transfer related to the regional stormwater facility from Clausen Quality Chocolates to the city of Milton.
So this is somewhat of a housekeeping matter. Clausen Quality Chocolates has agreed as part of their development plan to construct, pay for and construct a stormwater facility that will then be deeded over to the city of Milton incorporated as part of kind of a larger stormwater facility that exists just south of Putman Parkway. This also went before the plan commission earlier this evening and was approved unanimously.
Okay, just raise your hand if you have a question or a comment. Okay, and is there certain language for this?
I believe this one would be for the common council to authorize or execute the approve the property transfer from Clausen Quality Chocolates to the city of Milton for the stormwater facility.
I will make that motion.
I'll say it.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? All right, that motion carries. All right. Discussion and possible action regarding the proposed twenty twenty-two water, wastewater and tid budgets. It says Al and Kelsey. It says Al and Kelsey or?
It was just gonna say Kelsey was gonna unmute, so.
It's gonna be Kelsey because she is the most wonderful treasurer that we're honoring. So it is all you, Kelsey.
I will start and then if Al or Mark want to jump in, they are more than welcome to. Staff went through and prepared the twenty twenty two budget for water wastewater and our five active tid. Locations. These budgets are different from the general fund. They're not tax supported. So they were not previously approved back in November when we did the other process. Everything with utility budgets are staying consistent with prior years. One big thing to note is at the end of twenty twenty two wastewater will be debt free. It is our last payment in twenty twenty two. Our tid budgets are more of a projection instead of an actual budget. They fluctuate based on project demands as the year goes through. And I think that's about it for those.
Yeah, I don't have much to add other than, you know, the TIFs are all performing exceptionally well. TIF six is coming to the end of its useful life, so we are no longer within our expenditure period. So basically, once the debt is defeased within that TIF, we have the ability to close that TIF. And you is, if you looked at it, you can see that TIF nine and TIF eleven are doing phenomenally well. And in fact, TIF nine is supporting TIF ten up until such time that the debt is defeased from TIF ten. So we are in excellent shape in, in all of our TIF districts. Even our smaller downtown ones, seven and ten are doing well considering. You know, what projected expenditures would be at a downtown TIF district. Typically, we don't see much beyond facade grants or just smaller scale ones like. Mitchells or TLC restoration. So I have no concerns and in fact, I am quite pleased with the performance of all the TIFs. And, and really that's by design. We are, although we are aggressive with our TIF districts marketing. We are conservative in how we project out with those TIF districts. And more often than not, in, in, in our cases of TIF districts, we under project, which is always where you want to be. You don't necessarily want to over project. So it's, it's, it's great news and. Nice to be moving forward.
Very, any questions? Larry? No?
No questions. Thank you.
I'm sorry, I couldn't see if your eyes were open because I'm not wearing my glasses.
Sorry. I have dark glasses too.
Ryan?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
No questions.
Bill?
No question.
Is there some, is there action that needs to be taken just to approve the budgets?
Yeah, I think just a simple motion to approve the tax incremental financing. And water and wastewater budgets for twenty twenty two.
Devin?
I'll make that motion.
I'll say.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay.
Thank you. Well done.
Discussion impossible action regarding easement dedications related to the Clausen Quality Chocolate Development.
So similar to item number twenty one, this is kind of a housekeeping matter. This one is, is important to the city in the early kind of negotiations, if you want to call it that. Really, in the early phases of, of site development with Clausen Quality Chocolates. They were amenable and in fact supportive of the idea of allowing us to extend the rail. That is currently under construction to the east i- in the event that development requires it. So they are effectively allowing us to extend rail across their property. Which they don't have to do, but understand that, you know, the rising tide lifts all boats, so they are, were amenable to that. There is also an easement that will allow for utility, utilities to be extended. To serve development to the east as well as an easement to allow for stormwater to run from Clausen to our pot.
Any questions or comments? No. Bill, Linda?
Yes. I was just wondering. I, I kind of feel like, are, are we gonna have any problems with? Any future expansion if we don't? If we don't take this opportunity to do this?
Ah, I mean, I, I guess short answer is, is yes, potentially. In the event that an entity would like to utilize rail and would develop east of Clausen Quality Chocolates. If this easement didn't exist, we would have to find a new route for the rail, which would be challenging and costly. And Clausen certainly recognizes that as well. You know, I mean, the mayor said in a meeting with them yesterday and they are very conscience, conscious. Our future development plans, they do, do not want to be inhibit any opportunities for us to, to grow. So. The short answer is, is yes, but luckily, you know, we don't really have to worry about that because they're being good neighbors.
But that makes us responsible? Or is that their responsibility because it's going over their property?
No, it would be us.
Okay. And I guess the reason that I'm asking is. I just want to make sure that if we're going to be doing the extension, expansion, which of course we, we should be doing. I don't want to tie the council, a, a future council. In the event of something that would change with Clausen.
Oh, I don't, I don't think any, that's why we do the agreement. With them. So if future development wanted rail, it would be there for them.
Right. It, the, this would allow us to get to them.
At this time, then, do we have to be working with the railroad?
No, we would only construct that rail in the event that it was a necessity for development.
Okay. Thank you.
Bill?
No questions.
Brian?
No questions.
Larry?
No questions.
Did I miss anybody? Devin?
I'll make a motion to approve acceptance of the easement documents.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Is there, is there anybody that wants to speak? Okay. Thank you. All right. Twenty six swimming pools. Discussion impossible action regarding ordinance four ninety four, amending division seven. Outdoor swimming pools.
I will take this one. So staff has received concerns from residents along with. The code enforcement officer Larson about permitting and fencing regulations for. Outdoor swimming pools, specifically temporary swimming pools. So the staff has reviewed the existing ordinance and then we did today propose an ordinance with changes just as a starting off point. For discussion too. And so what we are happy, having issues with is the fencing and the permit regulations. So there is no clarification on outdoor swimming pools if ones are temporary in nature compared to permanent. The regulation is the entire ordinance. This section applies to any pool with a height of more than thirty inches and that's from the bottom to the top of the pool itself. Regardless of the depth of the water. And so the existing ordinance, the permit application is fifty five, fifty five dollars for any that fall under this. That depth, plus there's an additional fee for the electrical and plumbing for the pool pumps, et cetera. And the swimming pools all require a five foot fence surrounding the swimming pool. And then the minimum setback insider restrictions are with the current zoning ordinance. So. The couple portions for the, for the fence and the fencing and the permit regulations. So the, the building permit, it is not required to have a permit. It's not a state requirement unless there's electrical and plumbing. So for example, the temporary pools that you just plug into your house. The side of your house with that pump, there's not a regulation from the state that says you have to have a permit. For that, that's just a local decision. And then state also does not have a requirement for fence. It's just a local decision. The proposed changes that we have put forth tonight is to start with a clarification between a swimming pool, a temporary swimming pool and a waiting pool. So waiting pool is going to be your small one and a half foot. Depth. A temporary swimming pool is one that is not up for the entire year. It's up for a season or a month. Anytime less than a fully functioning permanent fixture. Then a swimming pool is that permanent fixture that's going to stay up throughout the year. Permits are in this ordinance permits are required for those swimming pools that are a fixture or considered permanent. Waiting pools and hot tubs are exempt. So the reason why hot tubs are exempt is there is a requirement. That each hot tub have a locking cover on it. That is something a manufacturer has to provide to the. To the user. And it's, it's required to be in when not in use. So then what we are proposing is that for the fences, we changed it to four feet. For in-ground pools for four feet in height. Or if there's a safety cover that meets minimum requirements, then that fence could be reduced to three feet. Then above ground pools, they could have a barrier of three feet above the top rim of the pool. And maybe a solid wall or fence. So that's the top of the pool itself, then three feet up. And then on this, that pool may not be, and that barrier cannot be located within six feet of any other wall. So somebody couldn't climb up onto another structure and then go over that bear, three foot barrier. And if someone has, again, above ground pool safety cover, meaning the minimum requirements. And then it could be reduced to a three foot fence. And then the change would be instead of the. Setback restrictions that we have now, it would be just a ten feet requirement away from any lot line. And so on the enforcement side, Officer Larson has stated that what, there's not clear fish. Clarification or guidance if someone is, has a temporary pool if they've received a permit because they may have it up for a week. They may have it up for a month and, and people aren't noticing it. Also, the cost for this permit is fifty five dollars, so that sometimes exceeds it. Seeds the cost of the pool, so then they may not be interested in it, or they may try and. Put it somewhere where the city isn't able to see it. So we just want to review it and see a clarification. And see if this is something that we would like to just review.
All right, it took me three times to unmute, to try to mute myself. Okay, so. Other than having Jenny repeat any of it, which we should not ask her to do.
And there is a lot in this, so.
There is a lot, there is a lot. But I think I understand it. Bill, any questions?
No, I think I'm good.
Teresa?
I understand it. I, are there any changes in somebody's insurance? If they choose not to have any fencing around pool property or?
That I do not know the answer to. What if each insurance company is different? I don't know that answer.
Yeah. It's a good question, but the fencing requirement is still in place for any permanent pool. For a temporary pool. I don't know if an insurance company would get involved. I'm not really sure. It's, it's a good question. But the fencing requirement would still be i- in place for, for a permanent pool, either above or below ground.
Okay.
And I will say this, this came up primarily because of the temporary pools. That, that was definitely the concern. I have not heard the concern on installing a fence at this point. For somebody that has a permanent in-ground, especially in-ground pool.
Okay. Thank you.
Larry?
Well, the only thing I could say is I had a pool where I used to live and, and I had a hard time getting insurance without it. So in a permanent pool, I had a permanent pool. So they, they probably will request it. I do like the dissemination between the temporary pool and the permanent pool. I think that's critical and important. And also the hot tubs, just, just so people know what the ordinance is specifically targeting, so. Thank you.
Ryan?
I kind of agree with Larry on the last thing you said there about dissemination of the, you know, breaking those apart. The temporary, the waiting and the permanent and having more of a definition to them.
Linda?
I agree with what everybody has said so far. And I believe Teresa, I think that it just depends on your particular policy and the length of your policy.
Yeah.
So. But I, I, I like having the separation between the sizes of the pool. That always seems to be the big question. Good. One thing, the one thing that I would like to add is maybe somehow. And I don't know if Mark would think this is off to, off topic, but that. We have the ability, you can have a separate meter to fill your pools. Without being charged.
Oh, we actually do have the, we do actually have that, Linda. I mean, the outside water meter, people are able to come and rent an outside water meter. And then they put that on and they can fill that. So it does meter it separates. They're only paying for the water and not the sewer.
Right, right. But I just, sometimes I don't think a lot of people realize that. That they had that choice. But like I said, I don't want to go off topic here.
All right, Linda, thank you for behaving. So would it be adopt and waive a second and a third on this too, Mark?
If that's the wishes of the council, yeah.
I mean, that's a possibility. It's an option.
Yes.
Yes.
Devin, what would you like to do here? Tie our hands for two more meetings.
I would motion to amend ordinance four nine four. Wave the. Second and third reading and adopt.
Division seven of four nine four?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? All right, we, we're so close, you guys. You are doing great, hanging in there. Discussion impossible action regarding ordinance four nine five. Concerning possession of alcoholic beverages in public areas, Veterans Park.
So this, I don't know, I'm sorry, Jenny.
I'm gonna take all of them tonight.
Go for it. Yes, that's fine. Yeah.
I really not trying to change every ordinance, but so what this portion is, is because of the ordinance that is in effect for. Allowing alcoholic beverages in certain public areas at the time of that ordinance being in effect. The pavilion at Veterans Park was not in existence. And at that point, so we, we have not allowed that in the past, but. Veterans Pavilion is very popular and so there has been requests to allow alcoholic beverages there for private, for private parties and gatherings. So it's just a clean, basically a cleanup, adding that now that we do have the Veterans Park Pavilion. So we can add that into the ordinance as an exemption from not allowing alcoholic beverages in public areas.
Okay. Brian, any questions or comments?
No questions or comments.
Larry?
No questions.
Linda?
No questions.
Teresa?
Questions?
Bill?
No questions.
And is this a, an option of adapting and waving second and third to, okay?
Yes, it is.
All right, Devin?
I will move to include Veterans Park under ordinance number four nine five. Concerning the possession of alcoholic beverages in public areas, waive the second and third reading and adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that motion carries. Along the same theme of Veterans Park, discussion and possible action on increase of costs for bricks at the Milton area Veterans Memorial. Who is taking this one?
I'll take it, we received notification from Peckman Memorials, they're the company that we've been working with since. I think twenty thirteen maybe, or twenty eleven, I can't remember exactly. Um, on the brick placement and brick engraving for the Milton area Veterans Memorial. So we were notified probably in January that the rates for them are going to be increasing. And the new rates that we're proposing reflect that increase. Um, you can see the changes for eight by eight are ninety-five to one twenty-five. Sixteen by sixteen bricks are going from one fifty to two hundred and then a sixteen by sixteen would go from two fifty-five to three fifty. So just looking for approval of those fee changes.
Any questions or comments on this? Devin?
I will motion to approve the increase of costs for bricks at Milton area Veterans Memorial.
Say it.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Anyone opposed? That motion carries. It's really sad we're not doing team building with Devin. But. Committee reports. Staff reports. Kelsey?
I don't think I have anything to share tonight.
Okay Jenny?
Okay, so we made it through the spring election, everything went smoothly. Um, so just kind of a recap of the information, um, we had nine hundred and forty-four votes. And two hundred and forty-one of those were absentee ballots that were returned. Along with the eighteen election day registrations. Um, so we had seventeen election officials throughout the day helping us and they did absolutely wonderfully. I think everything went very well, um, so it was, it was great to see kind of the passion of the people that were interested in assisting this time. Um, so that is all I have for the election, again, everything went pretty well and we are already starting to get ready for the August election. And on another note then, on board of review, um, we, the letters have been sent out for those people that have had changes in assessments. Um, so April eleventh is planned, open book is starting and then, um. We'll have border review in May, so then we will. Go from there, um, so that is all that I have at this point.
And are you done laying all these ordinance changes on us?
No, 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 it's, no, 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 but I, I, I might. The next few, next few, I don't know if I'll present though, I'll have somebody else.
Oh no, whoever's idea this was, you're talking.
No, so, so with these ordinance, it's, it's mostly clarification, um, especially since we are going through and doing, um, especially. Uh, Mark, Mark and I are going through and just kind of looking at these ordinance is making sure we understand and there's a few things that, um, just mostly clarification. Um, and just to review it and so that's where these are coming from.
And it's never ending, all right, that's what I hear you saying, no commitment to stop.
No, no, no commitment.
Inga?
I just want to let everyone know that we do have the community recognition picnic scheduled for May twenty-sixth, it'll start at five thirty for, with the picnic. And then six o'clock, the program will start and we are still accepting nominations for awards for individuals, businesses, organizations, employees. Anyone you want to nominate for an award, we'd gladly accept the nominations and those are due on April fifteenth.
All right, thank you, Ashley. Oh, there you are.
Um, throughout this month of April, we have artwork from the consolidated students on display throughout the library. Um, and then next month we'll have Harmony students, so please come to, to library, kind of take a look at all their hard work, they are amazing. Um, next Friday is the Red Cross Youth Club's blood drive being held at City Hall. Um, they're kind of new that in collaboration with Long Line Club, so that is from ten to three. And then I wanted to give a shout out to Jen Schutz and Deb Dean, they are both stepping down from the library board. Um, they have been part of the board for many, many years, um, Deb thinks she started sometime in the nineties. Um, so I really appreciate all their guidance and being a part of the library, um, the library's journey. But we're excited to bring more people on board for the library's future, so I just want to give them a shout out.
Thank you very much. Chief?
Um, I would say all, if not most of you received my email today with our twenty twenty-one annual report, I guess I said something yesterday. Um, take a look at that, pretty proud of my staff, uh, it was quite a challenge. With second year pandemic on top of two vacancies. And brand new processes to get to new employees hired by putting them through the academy, which is a process we did for the first time. And we are seeing the light at the end here and hoping within just a couple of weeks. We'll have Officer Toby Cook and Samantha Zabel both working solo on the road at the completion of their training. That's all I have for today.
Thank you very much. Mark E., Mark E.
Parks are gonna be opened up here later this month, hydrant flushing will start up later this month. Um, otherwise just normal stuff. Nothing else.
And when is spring coming, just, just wondering?
Next year.
Mark, can I get you a groundhog, it seems?
Um, no major updates other than, you know, this is probably one of the longer agendas we've had in a while, so you can obviously see that, uh, kind of what we've been working on. Uh, but in typical fashion with the staff that we have, uh, Jenny remains humble in how fantastic a job she did yesterday. Certainly, you know, it takes a team and Inga and Kelsey and Kaylee and, and many others from city staff helped out, but Jenny was the one who kind of. Uh, organized it all, heard nothing but positive comments from both the public and the election, uh, workers. We had some new poll workers in there, um, and, you know, elections are a very, uh, hot topic in our country. And, uh, we are not immune to that here at our local level and Jenny did a better than, uh, superb job of handling. A lot of curveballs that were thrown her way and a lot of undue scrutiny and, uh, she did it with poise and professionalism. And I think it showed i- in the, in the, the, kind of just the general demeanor of the room all day long, it was upbeat and, and people were. Uh, pleased with the, uh, with the layout and the processing and we've got a good group of poll workers and, uh, it's a reflection of our community.
Yep, and, and great job on the balloons with a shortage of helium, I mean, who pulled that stuff off? It's like miracle work, right?
I was not gonna be defeated by that helium shortage when it. Those are all here, those are, we're all using a hand pump, all fifty of them were blown up.
And I don't know if everybody got a chance to see the celebrity that posed in front of the selfie station on our Facebook page, but if you haven't, go check it out.
I was very honored to be able to be with that person.
The only person I know that's got a building named after him, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah. Okay, so I think that's everybody as far as general items. Um, Ashley, can you remind us when the food truck rally is?
It is Sunday, May first from ten to two.
Okay.
All right. By then.
Well, Mark just condemned it, so I don't even know. Um, I feel like there is something else coming up, but I don't really remember what it was.
Um, I guess two things, so April. Twenty-second, I believe at seven PM, I can confirm that time, David Benlin's gonna be leading a nature walk in recognition of Earth Day. At the dog park, so, um, I, I could send an email out on that just with the confirmed time. And then on April thirtieth, in recognition of Arbor Day, we'll be working on a tree planting. And then we're also going to be doing, uh, tails and trails dog park cleanup that day as well. And again, working on finalizing time, so I'll send out an email just to confirm those with everybody.
Okay, all right, I think that must be it then. Ryan, right?
Consideration of a motion to convene to closed session pursuant to section nineteen point eight five subsection one C. Wisconsin statutes considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction. Or exercise their responsibility, uh, city staff evaluations and retirees' health insurance.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Does anyone oppose, like I feel like literally everybody raised their hand to second.
So that means Devin seconded it, right?
Yeah, and was that unanimous? To go into closed session? All right, we are now in open session and, um, is there a motion? Or action that the council would like to take?
I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding for health insurance premium system, premium assistance program. For Michael Chesmore upon retirement.
Second.
There's a motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? All right. Um, our next meeting for almost everybody here. And Devin, of course, you're welcome to join us anytime, April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Almost.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?